You missed the call to me, man. That was at 5:30.
Oh, I thought it was supposed to be at 7:00. Sorry about that. Okay, well.
Hey, how's everybody doing? See you guys.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today, this is the Arlington Planning Commission Workshop, Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. At this time, I'd like to have everyone please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, if we could call, roll call, please.
Commission Chair Tim Dean.
Here.
Vice Chair Bruce Angel. Commissioner Melissa Johnson. Not present. Commissioner Yvonne Van Orna.
Here.
And Commissioner Mike Thomas.
Here. Thank you very much. At this time, we are, make a, our chair requests a motion for approval of the agenda.
I want to approve your agenda.
All second. Okay, all seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Looks like it is unanimous. Thank you. Next items will be our workshop items, our discussion items today. We'll start with item number one, excuse me, which is the Bird Scooter Bicycles Presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'd like to introduce Michael Covado, and he will give a presentation on the Bird Company and what their program consists of and how it can be applicable to the Arlington community. Hi, Michael.
Hi, good evening, members of the commission. Thank you for having me this evening. I do have a short presentation here, if you'll allow me to share my screen.
Yes, you should be able to share your screen there.
Perfect. Thank you. Is everyone able to see at this point?
Yes.
Excellent. So I'm Michael Covado with Bird Rides Incorporated. We do business as Bird. We are a shared electric mobility company, present in over 300 cities globally, making us the largest shared mobility provider in the world. We were originally founded in 2017 in Santa Monica, California, as a first last mile transportation solution. Our overall missions, as you can see here, are to overall, to improve the quality of life within cities, improve air quality, and provide alternative transportation that can help reduce congestion and connect communities. The way that our system works is very similar to some of the bike share systems you might already be familiar with. Individuals will download a mobile application onto their smartphone, see one of our scooters throughout the community, or via the map functionality on the mobile application. When they first create an account, they are obliged to go through a safety tutorial where they are taught safe riding behavior, as well as proper parking etiquette. Upon approaching one of our scooters within the community, they can simply scan it to unlock, take it where they need to go, usually somewhere around 10 to 15 minutes away before hitting a button to end their ride. Our pricing is quite affordable, as this is designed to be a public transportation option that is accessible to the broadest range of the population in general. So we charge $1 to unlock, plus a certain number of cents per minute, depending on city factors. The scooter that I think would be most appropriate for Arlington would be our Bird Zero scooter. That's based off of some of the availability that we have within the region, as well as some of the functionality that we might expect. One of the features that I'd like to draw your attention to is the safety decal that you'll see an example of on the bottom right-hand corner of the screen. There you'll see the 24/7 contact information that all individuals, regardless of whether they are a rider or not, can use to get ahold of us if, for example, they want to request that a scooter be moved or report an issue with one of them, such as damage or inappropriate parking. There's also an email address and multiple social media accounts people can use to get ahold of us for the same purpose. Additionally, I do want to direct you to the front headlight and the taillights and brake lights that are on every single one of our units, ensuring that they are visible at night. We cap the maximum speed of the scooters at 15 miles per hour, which you see within the chart on the left-hand side, which is about what your average amateur bicyclist uses, or travels at. In terms of the general use, they would be analogous to a bicycle. The way that we typically approach a partnership with a city is through conversations like these, making sure that this would be a good fit, in particular with Arlington, which I'll dive into in a little bit of detail later. I do think that this could be an excellent opportunity to connect the Old Town with Smokey Point, create an operational plan together in collaboration with city staff, before doing a launch in connection with the city on a date that would be most appropriate, as well as providing ongoing resources that all city staff and elected officials could utilize to get ahold of us if there was ever any kind of dynamic change that would be necessary. The most important point I want to stress here is that we are not looking for any subsidy, nor any investment from the city. This is something where Bird will cover all of the upfront costs, as we feel that this is something that would be a good fit within the community that we can, in the long term, be profitable in. Part of our operational model also includes partnering with local small business owners or local entrepreneurs to perform some of the day-to-day field work, such as the deployment of the scooters, rebalancing, just a fancy word for moving the scooters from where places, or from places where people have ended their ride, as well as recharging. What that means is that we can create a direct primary economic benefit for members of the Arlington community by providing a small business that has no upfront cost, no fixed cost, and no termination penalty if things are simply not a good fit. Simultaneously, the city has the confidence of knowing that there is somebody with deep community ties who is going to be locally based that can address any of the day-to-day concerns that might arise. In terms of what this means for the community, 56% of our trips do end in front of a small business. There is considerable evidence which shows that businesses accessible by alternative transportation actually see increased spend. Our fleet manager, that's the local small business owner or entrepreneur that I alluded to earlier, on average, takes home a little over $70,000 a year. In a community where there is no other shared mobility, it could potentially be higher. Certainly, I think Arlington is well-suited for a system of this nature. Finally, Emory University recently released a study where they showed that over a six-month period, every single individual e-scooter brought an additional $921 of spending in local food and beverage businesses. Being that this can be an excellent way to help stimulate the local economy, drive additional traffic to some restaurants, even retailers, and improve some of the spending within them. As we were the first company in the world to offer shared electric scooters, it has given us an opportunity to hone our technology quite substantially. We have very sophisticated geofencing and geo-speed controls. What that means is that every single scooter is equipped with a GPS module, as well as something known as an IoT device, something similar to a cellular phone or brain on the scooter, that allows us to digitally control where the scooters can and cannot go, as well as at what speed they can travel at. This means we can create digital boundaries blocking off the airport to prevent anybody from thinking it might be a good idea to take a scooter onto some of the runways and the like, as well as encouraging individuals to park or travel in a particular location. As safety is one of our primary priorities, or is our primary priority, we're also the only company to offer a feature we call Helmet Selfies. If an individual takes a photograph of themselves wearing a helmet at the end of their ride, they will receive credit to their next ride. This is in connection with an ongoing pre-helmet campaign that we have ongoing throughout the year, wherein an individual can request directly from our mobile application or our website to have a helmet shipped directly to their doorstep at no additional cost beyond $9.95 for shipping and handling. Finally, our parking management allows us to work collaboratively with the city during special events or if there is a particular area that is creating congestion, to create designated or encourage or incentivize parking areas so that individuals bring the scooters to those locations to avoid any risk of clutter within the community. We also offer a few additional cool features, such as our Warm-Up Mode, which reduces the maximum speed on certain make models of scooters for new users, down from 15 miles per hour to 6 miles per hour, until they gain a little bit more confidence and a little bit more familiarity with the system, and then enables a gradual increase so that people have an opportunity to really learn the ropes. Quick Start is an industry first. It allows an individual to simply turn on a setting within their phone, approach any scooter they see, and have the system do all the communications so that they can seamlessly commute to wherever it is they need to go. Not included within this page is another feature that was only very recently released that I'd like to make sure I mention, which is our Safe Start feature. After the hours of 10, or at the hour of 10:00 PM and onward until the fleet shuts down, individuals will have to pass a cognitive test in order for the scooter to unlock to help prevent instances where individuals do, might have had a few alcoholic beverages gaining access to the system. I hope that this is the appropriate forum to engage in a bit of a Q&amp;A here. And certainly, I want to make sure that I address the unique considerations of Arlington, so I'd be more than happy to answer anything that the commission might have, if there's something that has come up.
Thank you for the presentation, Michael. Yes, yeah, we're more than welcome to do a Q&amp;A right now.
Perfect. Appreciate it.
You say it's another city. Do you have this place in Washington cities?
Washington has historically been a little bit more challenging for Bird to expand into. It's something that I'm hoping that we can correct through partnerships with cities like Arlington. We do have a number of partnerships with cities of comparable size or comparable geography, but Washington, not as much.
What other, what western states, Oregon, California?
Every state that surrounds Washington. So we're in Oregon, we're in Nevada, we're in anything western other than Washington, unfortunately.
Have the hurdles here been geographical, political, financial? Or you just haven't gotten here yet?
Mostly the latter. We also have a competitor within the region that initially gained a little bit of additional foothold. Having said that, I believe that that's stagnated a little bit and has given us an opportunity to partner with new cities. Most importantly, I think, was an operational model that we developed maybe about a year and a half, two years ago, that has enabled us to work with communities that were previously out of our reach, places like Arlington, where it might have been very challenging to enter without these local partnerships. That has really allowed us to ensure that we can deliver on a level of service that all communities deserve.
I'm assuming you can pass on the name of the cities where you have established to our, to our staff to, so we can follow up, just to see what other people's experience has been?
Absolutely. Following this meeting here, I'll be more than happy to send a list over of some comparable cities to the city staff that I've been communicating with.
Another question, unless someone has one, is how finely grained can, is your GPS capable of controlling limits of travel? Geographical limits of travel?
It is very sophisticated. So from a software perspective, you can split a sidewalk in half. However, you will run into the same limitations that you run into with GPS, as it does run on the same system, meaning you can get a few feet of variability depending on circumstances. What that means is, from a geofencing perspective, you would be unable to geofence off the sidewalk, but certainly you'd be able to geofence off a driveway or a city block or anything along those lines.
And I'm assuming that at those speeds, you're not operating on the street, you're operating on sidewalks?
So you would be, treat them as you would a bicycle, keep them to the right hand of the street, keep them in bike lanes, on multi-use trails, et cetera. State law essentially boils down to treat them like a bicycle under most circumstances. Certainly, I think that would be appropriate for Arlington.
There are cities that have restrictions, particularly on trails, regarding motorized vehicles. In those cities, to your experience, does this qualify as a motorized vehicle?
It depends on the definition, realistically. In some instances, yes, in many other instances, no. We'd have to do a review of the local ordinances within Arlington and how things are phrased in order to be able to make a full determination. My understanding at this point in time is that if the city would allow this to operate on the trail, it shouldn't be an issue, so certainly we could include in any kind of agreement. If there were concerns about use on the trail, that's where I believe some of our geo-speed controls could be very effective. Rather than having the scooters travel at the 15 miles per hour, we could reduce it to 12 or 10 miles per hour to make the experience more positive for not only the riders, but for pedestrians or other users of the multi-use trail.
But we could, for instance, if we were to apply it here, we have, we're building a trail system here, some of which we've already developed, as you probably know. And there may be some areas where perhaps you don't want them to be with that kind of vehicle, but your GPS, sounds like your GPS is accurate enough that we could control that. Not which side of the trail, but which trail?
Exactly. So certainly you could block off an entire portion of trail, but it would not be possible to block off only half of the trail, exactly as you've described.
And I'm also assuming that even in Washington, where we have helmet laws, that that would not necessarily be required on these?
I apologize, I didn't hear the question. Would you be able to repeat it?
Yeah, Washington has a helmet law for scooters and bikes. So not bicycles, but what do you anticipate the requirement for helmets would be in Washington?
State law does require that a user wear a helmet. We also actively encourage our users to wear helmets. It's part of the reason why we engage in these pre-helmet campaigns that I mentioned earlier, as well as the Helmet Selfie feature that we developed to further encourage it. Ultimately, the user is going to be the one who determines whether they will follow state law, and it will boil down to an enforcement piece. We do have the capability to suspend, terminate accounts if there are habitual offenders of that nature. In general, I think it's more important for us to encourage people and to make sure that helmets are as accessible as possible. When we have an opportunity to move past some of the health and safety risks related to COVID, we can engage in some of the community events that we've engaged in in the past, which includes coming to communities and handing out helmets to further keep it top of mind for everyone.
Yeah, I was just trying to distinguish between, as far as helmets are concerned, between advisory and regulatory.
So from a regulatory perspective, it would be the user who has the burden of responsibility. We do everything we can to make that a very easy option for them to engage in by providing the free helmets, by encouraging them and incentivizing them to wear a helmet, by instructing them to wear a helmet. I believe you may have seen on the safety decal that I allude, or that I mentioned earlier on one of the slides, it even includes key instructions, which are wear a helmet, obey all traffic rules, et cetera.
So this would be advisory, not, I mean, from your perspective now, it would be more, it would be advisory. You certainly would stress the using of helmets, but not require them.
Exactly. So we do everything we can to encourage their use, but burden of responsibility. And from a regulatory perspective, it would be the end user who would be responsible for wearing a helmet.
So I have. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I recently took, was traveling around some of the western states and I don't know if you can answer this question or not, but I saw a very, it looked to me as though a very successful scooter cam type of business in Park City, Utah. Are you guys in Park City?
We are in Park City, Utah. That would be our company, yes.
Then you must have been the company that was there, okay. Because I thought it was incredibly successful there. Because I saw, I probably saw at least just in one or two walks up and down that main road, and I saw probably 15 people riding around on them. So, so good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple. Can I ask a question? Did you say there was age restrictions for them to rent it? Sorry if I missed it.
Our users, from a company perspective, would be required to be 18-plus. We can engage in ID verification in order to ensure that our users are 18-plus. What I typically suggest is it may be better to allow the community to first have access to the system and see if that is an issue before turning on such functionality. Reason being is it tends to discriminate against some of the disadvantaged communities that might not necessarily have access to a driver's license.
Okay. And then if you were to come in and be a part of this community, would it work on a contract? Is it just kind of until it just works? It doesn't work? How, what is that, what's the length of that?
Great question. What I personally feel would be most appropriate is maybe an MOU that includes early termination language for the city. So if things simply are not working out, we can shake hands, part ways, and try again in a few years. Part of what we do, part of our process, is actually ensuring that we provide a dedicated Bird employee to maintain the relationship with the city. This account manager can work with city staff on an ongoing basis to make any adjustments to the fleet and ensure that if there are any concerns, we implement the technological solutions we have at our fingertips to help mitigate them or eliminate them.
What is your response time to any of the ones that are abandoned? I've been to multiple cities now where these are all over the place and they're just trash, and they're terrible. And so what does that look like with you and what does that response time really look like when they're a nuisance?
That's a very, very valid concern. I think one of the best solutions we can have even before response time is coming in with a much smaller fleet than you might have seen in some of the other communities. That allows to be extremely high-touch in the day-to-day management, and it'll also reduce the likelihood that there are so many scooters that they can cause a clutter. In terms of response time, it's usually within three hours between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. After that, because it would be very challenging to have a 24-hour operation in Arlington, we would say within three hours the following day.
Do you share, sorry, I have two more. Do you share any of the demographics of your customers with the city? I mean, I know we have some other ways of acquiring that information as well, but as you're getting the renters and you're talking about them spending the money and being here, and especially if they're coming from out of town and it's something fun for them, is there a way to share that information with us as well?
Excellent question. So we do have certain reporting that we can provide to the city on an ad hoc basis. More importantly, we'll actually provide the city with real-time data dashboards all about the utilization, the heat mapping, commuters, all of those sorts of things, so that the city will have real-time access to a vast majority of the information that I think would be relevant in determining whether the fleet is beneficial, successful, et cetera.
And then what kind of marketing are you doing to show people that Arlington is one of the first ones? If we, again, assuming, right, but like, what kind of marketing would you help us with? And would you be doing too? And how does that look?
I'd love for us to do a joint press release. I think that's something that could be very effective in not only bringing a lot of the information that would be relevant to the community to the fore, but simultaneously, a good way of getting out to the public, hey, this is something that Arlington is interested in doing and bringing in, and being a pioneer within.
Sorry, it's all tourism-brained, so. And then last question. You mentioned about reporting a rider. What does that look like? What, when you're saying reporting a rider, possibly restricting them? How does, you know, it's a repeat offender, not wearing their helmet, or driving in the street the wrong way? What does that look like? And how do you restrict them?
So it depends on the circumstances. If it's a relatively minor infraction, it could be somebody who simply just forgot what they were supposed to do. So we'll typically engage in re-education at first, send a direct email message, hey, this is what you're supposed to do, here's how you're supposed to follow appropriate traffic laws, et cetera. Because all users are required to sign up with a valid credit card, and as I mentioned earlier, optionally a valid ID, it does give us quite a bit of control over enabling who can and cannot access the system. So we can temporarily suspend an account if there is a rather serious infraction, or even ban an account and terminate it if there is something that we feel would, that would be necessary for.
I think that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was curious about your range, and you said that you have a person around, and so if everybody wanted to go from here to Smokey Point, but nobody wanted to come back, they got to load them all in a truck and bring them back, or? And how far could they go between charges and all of that kind of stuff?
So each scooter on a full charge has about a 30-mile range, so certainly I think it would be more than enough to get to Smokey Point and back if somebody wanted to do so. Regardless, we will have that local fleet manager who will be keeping the fleet charged, maintained, et cetera, and rebalanced in an appropriate position. That means that somebody can make sure that the scooters are always in a good place, where somebody is likely to use them, and the community will see benefit from it.
Okay. Everybody had lots of good ones.
I also had just one final question.
Of course.
And this is maybe a little bit off-topic, but we have sometimes pretty large events here, and sometimes the folks at these events could use something like a scooter of this nature to get transportation around the event venue. Does the company ever provide anything like this for the users?
Absolutely. So we work with city staff for all kinds of special events to create special geofencing parameters, special parking parameters, et cetera. We do have the capacity to create various codes and the like that'll ultimately be up to the local operations manager to determine whether it's something that can fit within the structure of the fleet. But part of the duties and the responsibilities of the city's relationship manager will be ensuring that you have somebody that you can always reach out to so that we can make the arrangements that would be most necessary for a special event. For example, let's say you have a parade. You don't think it would be appropriate for the scooters to be riding through the parade route. We can block off that route for the day so that nobody thinks it might be a good idea to take them in there.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Members of the commission really appreciate your time this evening. Thank you. Unless there are other questions, I apologize. I wasn't trying to cut it short.
No, thank you very much, Michael. We'll be in touch with you and appreciate the presentation.
Look forward to speaking again soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
So this time we'll move on to item number two. Item number two on our agenda is Old Town Residential Design Standards Presentation.
Why is it not working?
Uh, let me see.
Oh, so the screen was black. Did it into another one. So it just like goes black and it's like not, let me mess with the course.
Oh. Oh.
Oh, there we go. And so when I switched it, like I got it loose. That's why. All right. I'll let you guys, if you want to do this.
Where would you like to stand?
Is it okay if I just stand right here?
You can.
Okay.
The mouse will work up on, straight up.
Okay. This is working?
Yeah. Test, test, test.
All right. I'll speak into it. Thank you very much.
Don't get too close to it.
Okay. Let's see here. All right. Well, good evening. I'm just, thank you very much for having us this evening. My name is Christine Baldwin. I'm with HKP Architects, and we have been working with Mark, Lana, and Amy to develop the Old Town Residential District Design Standards. I'm going to do my best to speak up, because I know it's a little muffled with the mask. So I wanted a chance to run through this draft with you. It is still in draft form, and the goal is this evening to be able to have a conversation if there's any items where we need to maybe redirect or adjust the content to better meet the needs of the city. So at any time, feel free to stop me and we can talk. So the goal of this is to align with some of the other design standards that have been developed for, with the city or by the city, so that there's a continuous format when it may be viewed. So we would start off with a table of contents that talks about some context, exactly where is the Old Town Residential District? Describe the existing style of housing that's in the neighborhood. Move to existing housing types. And also discuss alternative housing types that are appropriate for the neighborhood based off of what's currently there, what would fit within the fabric, and also the goal to increase density and access to housing. Beyond there, we would talk about design, architectural design, so even getting into scale proportions, specific requirements for corner lots, and some other items such as trim and material selection. We would also address new construction in particular, exterior rehabilitation and additions, as well as parking, land as well as parking, landscaping and fencing. And we would include a glossary to ensure that any terms that are utilized in the design standards are understandable by those that may not be reading these on a daily basis. So the intent of the design standards, as I'm sure we're all aware, is to preserve the community, is to preserve the neighborhood and the character of that neighborhood and not to prevent development, but to encourage development that aligns with what that character is. So not only protecting the value of the existing homes, but ensuring that those homeowners that may own additional parcels are not prevented from selling those parcels and developing. So again, it's about trying to balance the need to preserve that neighborhood, but also allow infill development to occur to increase the amount of housing. We want to ensure that we're blending in with the fabric of the existing styles and that the new housing that's being constructed matches that and doesn't deter from the character. We intend on providing some context of the neighborhood. So a little background on when the development or when the neighborhood first came to be. And again, to talk about the design, the character that currently exists. We would include a neighborhood map. So what you see here, the dark is, those are the parcels that are included within the Old Town Residential District. A couple of the large blocks here are the schools in this area as well as the hospital. There's quite a few different housing styles that exist in the Old Town Residential District. And we want to make sure that it's really understood by anyone that reads this what those are. So some of the most prominent ones and ones that we would want to encourage to continue development are the Folk Victorian and Farmhouse, Craftsman and Craftsman Bungalow, American Four Square, Western Ranch and Cape Cod Styles. And we'll dig into these a little bit more again to provide more insight into what each of those housing styles are. So to start with, we would provide background on the Folk Victorian and Farmhouse. So we provide a description here about what that is. And then we'll be providing graphics to illustrate the characteristics of that style. So this is just a placeholder at this time. But the intent is to describe what those key characteristics are for each housing style. So in terms of a front porch, roof pitch and any other characteristics. We'd also include alternative designs or massing of them because we acknowledge that not every Folk Victorian or Farmhouse comes in the same, you know, the same plan. There is a variety and we want to ensure that we encourage variety because the neighborhood was developed organically over many, many years. And it's not that every house is the same. This page represents getting into a little bit more detail about some of the specific attributes of the style. So again, we would look to highlight what the specific attributes are such as corner windows, spindle brackets, and point those out so homeowners or developers would have a good understanding of what those are. Move along to the Craftsman Bungalow Style. So again, provide a description of it as well as graphics and illustrations. And then similar to the previous style, highlights what some of those key attributes are. Another common housing style that exists in the neighborhood is the Four Square, the American Four Square. So again, trying to illustrate the different ways that it can be done, including not only single-family housing, but duplexes, triplexes and so forth. Again, some common attributes of Four Square to ensure that people have a good understanding of what those characteristics are. The Western Ranch is also a housing style that was noted in the neighborhood. So trying to utilize imagery of homes that match that style to highlight, such as minimal ornamentation, typically single-story, low-pitched roof. And lastly, the Cape Cod. So this is housing style that is actually located throughout the neighborhood. So that's something to point out here. In this neighborhood, it's not that there's one block that is all Cape Cod and one block that is all Craftsman. They're really intermixed. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to encourage that as this infill happens, it matches that kind of organic development. So you may get a Craftsman sprinkled in here, a Ranch sprinkled in here. So it's about ensuring that everyone gets a good understanding of what these housing styles are and how they could be utilized in many different infill situations. So similar to the others, trying to highlight some of the key attributes, dormers. And then what we want to dig into is we want to talk about what the housing types are that currently exist in the neighborhood. So not only other single-family, but there's also duplex, a side-by-side duplex. Often the ones that are in the neighborhood right now are symmetrical in nature. There's a couple of triplexes, a couple of fourplexes and a couple of townhomes as well. We would go on to define what each of these are through diagrams. So single-family homes, duplex. And then we would also talk about what some of the typical dimensions are for those. So the goal is that this gives a developer who may be developing an understanding of what would fit well within a parcel that's available. On this page, we would also provide the diagrams or an illustration of the different housing styles in the housing type. So we would illustrate a Farmhouse duplex side-by-side, a Cape Cod side-by-side and so forth. So again, trying to illustrate how housing styles are not just for single-family. They can be applied to many different housing types. You'd show a graphic representation of a fourplex. So this being two units side-by-side and then stacked on top of each other. This is kind of a basic graphic representation so everybody can get the concept clear in their mind. And then we would show here something that's more in tune to the Old Town Residential District, such as a four, or excuse me, a fourplex, but a fourplex that would be in a style that would be appropriate for this neighborhood. Again, we would note typical lot dimensions that would be necessary to accommodate this, square footage, and then typical building size. And again, show that in many different forms in terms of a housing style. Townhouses as well, we feel like would be appropriate. Part of this would get into what requirements there would be for a townhouse. So not only would there be requirements within meeting a housing style and aligning with a housing style, but ensuring that there's a little bit of push and play from unit to unit so that we do not end up with just a constant face, but there's kind of that movement within the townhouse. So again, provide information on what the typical dimensions would be for a townhouse. And one thing I'll point out here as well is that you'll see that we're calling out front-loaded and an alley-loaded. And I'll point this out again on the next one. So here, we want to also talk about housing styles that are not prevalent in the neighborhood, but housing, excuse me, housing types, but housing types that could be supported and added to the fabric of the neighborhood, but still honor the existing integrity of the neighborhood. So those are duplex stacked. So rather than having units side-by-side, they'd be on top of each other. A cottage court, which will show a diagram of a courtyard building and then an accessory dwelling unit, which you may more commonly know as an ADU. So here's an example of a duplex stacked. So again, unit one on top of the other. The advantage to a duplex stacked versus a duplex side-by-side is they can typically fit on a narrower lot, which can be advantageous for some of the parcels here that are about 38 feet wide. So rather than having two units side-by-side, that would be about 15 feet wide, you could have a 30-foot-wide unit, more or less, and have them stacked on top of each other. So this is one that we would want to promote. And what we're showing here is the lot width that would be necessary if there was a garage accessed from the main street versus a garage accessed from the alley. Currently in the neighborhood, the vast majority of housing has garages or parking accessed off the alley. And that's something that we would want to promote in any development in the neighborhood. A cottage court. This is a housing type where it's separate units that are organized around one common courtyard. As shown in this diagram here, they typically have parking accessed off an alleyway. So from a street perspective, it maintains a smaller scale and provides a nice community feel to it. This housing type typically requires a larger parcel because you're fitting more housing on one. But the benefit too, I'm going to actually double back here. The benefit here is, oh, sorry, I went the wrong way. I'm not sure if I can get back. So the benefit here as well, and we actually saw this, I think, in a couple of locations in the neighborhood already, is that it's advantageous when there's only one approach or one side that's street frontage, is that you're able to maximize a parcel that extends back and is deeper with a smaller frontage on the street. Another housing type we would promote is the cottage court, oh, excuse me, is the courtyard. And this is a little bit larger of a structure. It's typically one structure that incorporates many different dwelling units in it. And they are organized around one common courtyard. So whereas in single-family or duplex, each dwelling unit may have access to a private yard, this one really focuses inward and draws the residents into one common courtyard that is enjoyed by many. As well with this one, parking is typically accessed off the alley, which aligns with what we currently see in the neighborhood. And again, similar to the cottage court, requires a slightly larger parcel. So this could work in some of those areas where there's a little bit more land to be developed, perhaps with a smaller frontage. And lastly, we would want to talk about accessory dwelling units. There's many different ways to accommodate an accessory dwelling unit and we would want to make sure that we promote any that we feel like are in fitting with the character of this neighborhood. So you can have an accessory dwelling unit as a standalone structure, such as in your backyard. You can have an accessory dwelling unit that's attached to a garage, such as somebody has a three-car garage and they convert half of it to an accessory dwelling unit and they retain the other half for parking. You can have one on top of a garage. You can also convert an attic or a basement to an accessory dwelling unit. So again, this is all about ways to increase the density and the available housing in the community while ensuring that we're fitting in with the character of the neighborhood. So in an accessory dwelling unit, we would want to include language about ensuring that the style of an accessory dwelling unit, if it's a standalone structure, matches or agrees with the style of the house. We would then dig into scale and proportions that are appropriate for the neighborhood. One thing that we've noticed is that there's a blend of single-story homes, one and a half stories and two stories. There, from what we could identify was no three-story homes. So we'd want to ensure that any development and infill in the neighborhood blends in with that and matches not only block to block, but when standing on the street and looking at the houses, if it's all single-story houses, trying to encourage development of single-story houses to match those adjacent to it. So again, talk about scale and proportions, even getting into roof scale, and then also porch scale. So right now, the city code currently requires a porch of six feet in one dimension. We want to ensure that we address that in the design standards to ensure that it's a functional porch that welcomes activity on and is visible from the street. Talked about this previously, but promoting garages to be located off the alley so that what you see is the house and the front porch and is not a garage door. There are a couple instances where it would be, where it would not be feasible to have a garage off of an alley due to slope. So we'd want to make sure that the design standards accommodate those specifics cases. We would also address new construction beyond anything that's addressed previously in the document. Address exterior rehabilitation as well. So trying to define exterior rehabilitation from, not necessarily from a standpoint of if you improve your house by X amount of value, but if you're going to rehabilitate your house on, you know, 30% of it, this is what is necessary. So a couple of the things that we've outlined that we feel like are really important to preserving the character of the neighborhood is trim around windows. So ensuring that all four sides of a house are treated the same as what's on the front so that it's enjoyed by not only the community members that may be circulating around it, but also the homeowners and adjacent properties. Ensuring that the proper materials are selected for an exterior rehabilitation and that the appropriate window types are selected as well. In terms of additions, I spoke on this earlier, but ensuring that the housing style that currently exists is matched with the additions and that we talk about the scale of the addition to the house to ensure that the proportions are accurate and reflective of the home. And another element is ensuring that there's continuity between the lines or the datums of the existing house. So if there's an addition, ensuring that windows align from the addition to the new house. We would also talk about parking, so try and address this in more depth about areas where it's acceptable for parking and areas where it's not. Trying to discourage paved or unpaved parking in the front of the house and promote active and usable spaces in the front of the house, whether it be through grass or gardens. Talk about if there's any landscaping requirements. I know there are currently some requirements for planting trees and some shrubs along the alleyways. So we'd want to take a deep look at that and see maybe where there are some areas to revise the language to better reflect what the goal is for the neighborhood. And we would also, we're talking about fencing. So one of the areas where we want to address is what's acceptable or what's promoted for front yard fencing, as well as rear yard fencing, and discuss materials that are appropriate, again, to this specific neighborhood. So based off of the fencing that currently exists and what we see with the housing styles, we would want to promote the use of wood, decorative metal and vinyl as acceptable fencing materials. And we would want to discourage chain link fencing with or without privacy slats, concrete and concrete masonry units, which you may know as CMU. We want to include some examples of acceptable fencing, again, based off the housing styles. So what we have here, a couple of different wood fencing options. The code right now currently requires a certain transparency or openness in front yard fencing. So that's why the images that you see here all have some ability to see through. And there's also a height restriction for front yard fencing. So again, that's why these ones are lower in nature. Showing a couple decorative metal fencing options that are in keeping with the neighborhood character. Again, all lower. And then also examples of rear yard fencing. So in the rear, the fencing can be taller and it can be more solid in nature. So we want to show a couple of different examples of appropriate fencing for that. And then we also acknowledge that in some areas, it would be advantageous to have a little bit more transparency through fencing, oftentimes for gardens or just visibility through for whatever reason. So we also want to show some examples of acceptable fencing that includes a blend of wood and metal. Lastly, we would include a glossary. This would include pictures or illustrations to help define what some of these are. So we have a good way to reach people that may be So we have a good way to reach people that maybe understand writing a little bit more people that are more picture people. So we want to make sure that we address anything that may not be a common term that developers or homeowners may know. And with that, I'd welcome any questions.
Yeah. Thank you. Really good. Thank you. May you have a couple of questions?
When you're talking about, when someone in a block decides on a redo or replacement of a house, when you're talking about context, how far are you going with that? How fine-grained does that look? Are you looking a block away or two houses? Or what's your view of how that functions?
That's a great question. We feel like it's block to block, things really differ. So it may be that a corner house would likely need to address the homes adjacent to it on that block and across the street, but typically looking at a block-to-block kind of viewpoint, if you will.
And what it appears, at least from what you've described here, one of the issues with design standards is the ability of staff to administer that code.
Yep.
It appears, and I guess I'm asking the question, it appears that this doesn't require such specialized skill or training that it would be beyond our staff's ability to make judgments about these standards. Is that pretty much how you've approached this?
Absolutely. The goal is to provide all the information necessary, not only for those that may be developing, so developers or homeowners, but anybody would have the information and the understanding to understand what a farmhouse style is, what a craftsman style is, and they could apply those characteristics to their home. And then the staff would be able to understand, did they adhere to this or did they not? Did they implement this or are there some changes that need to be made? But yes, absolutely. The goal is for city staff to be able to take this, run with it, and administer it.
And is that, you mentioned a 30% standard for if someone's doing a remodel of an exterior, that if they're 30% or more, I'm assuming that's of area?
Yeah. So that's a number to be worked through and finalized. But oftentimes, what we see is that there's design standards that are implemented when you hit 50% of the value of the evaluation of your home. And that can be a little bit tricky to work through. So we feel like if instead it was a percentage of the house, so if they're working on 50% of the house or some number, so again, we still want to define that. But that's a pretty easy way for somebody to look, you know, at a drawing and say, are we there or are we not there? And then that would help establish, yes, we need to adhere to the design standards or no, we do not. So we want to work with Mark and his team to establish what that number is.
I'm going to keep going. Will part of this regulation, this set of regulations involve parking? And what parking regulations there might be, for instance, for an ADU?
Yeah, and actually, that's something, I'm not sure it's on this set right now, but there are certain recommendations for how many parking spaces are for each type of housing. We know that there's street parking that's available. So then it would go to the next step of, is there a requirement to provide parking that's off-street for each unit? And then that could be codified.
Now, you had mentioned that you were going to encourage the same sizes of houses. I remember before when we did this, if they were all single stories, you were going to allow, or not you, but allow like a story and a half, a half a story difference between them. Is that still the case? Or, I mean, you remember that, Mark? So if there was all two stories, it could be two stories. If they were all single stories, you could go to a story and a half. If there was a story and a half in a single, you could only go to the story and a half. Because we ended up with a lot of sore thumbs, you know?
......
Yeah.
Because a lot of houses do not look good, or should they be represented as a single or one and a half story?
Yes.
A lot of them need to be a two or two and a half story.
Yeah.
Especially if we're trying to get more units in that housing type.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. It's a weird one, you need to look at that on a case-by-case.
Yeah. Yeah. All as I heard was encouraged to be similar in that height. That's why I was wondering if there's going to be something in there.
Yeah, we just want to, we just want to get to the point that we're not going through, we have single-family or two-story or...
Yeah, then we get a two and a half.
Single-story or two-story, and then all of a sudden you have a three-story home.
Exactly.
You know, which is, you know, the focal point of the entire block.
Right.
But yes, I get your point on that, Mike, for sure.
And again, you know, the goal with these is to illustrate different housing styles in different shapes and forms. So a COD can be a single story, it can be one and a half, it can be a two-story. So to provide that kind of illustration for people to understand the many different ways that these could be developed to meet their needs.
When we were first discussing this, one of the problems we had was that, we talk about protecting Old Town, but there is such an enormous range. Some things you want to protect, some things maybe not so much.
Right.
And it seems like the styles you've selected here would provide that middle ground of this is really what we want to try to save. Because there are some dwellings in Old Town that we know are going to be redeveloped, pretty sure. And you've given us the tools, I think, in this to kind of save what, it's really hard to define exactly what the nature of Old Town is, but I think you've done really well with that. And thank you for that.
You bet. It is a very interesting and unique neighborhood because it has, you know, it's obvious that it has taken decades and decades and decades to develop to what it is. And so wouldn't it be in-fitting with the character if from this point on, everything had to match one's style? We can see how housing styles have evolved over the century just by looking at Old Town, and we want to make sure we honor that.
So Christine, I have a couple of items here. So when you were talking about the unit split, let's take a four-square, for example. You were kind of, at least that's my interpretation, is when you were talking about, you were talking about ground units and upper-floor units. But one thing I would like to be able to address within the standards is that we can also split the units both lower and upper floor. So people need to understand that. So you could have, you know, one room on the bottom floor, ground floor, one on the upper floor, and still get that yield out of that building. So I just want to make sure that's very clear to people when they're looking at that so they don't see it as, I don't want someone living above me, I want control of my own space, both upper and lower.
And that's referencing the fourplex?
No, well, it would be, it would be anything where you're over two stories, so, or two stories. So duplex is the same thing. You could have a ground floor and an upper floor duplex, split that way. I think that's more preferable to most people. They want to have control of that environment above their head.
Okay.
And so, you know, unless it's a Mulley family and there's just no way to avoid that, but when we're dealing with this, I think really emphasizing that that is both a ground and an upper floor for the dwelling units.
So it'd be like a front and a back?
Yeah, so you could split two in the front, two in the back.
Okay.
Setbacks is one thing that I kind of hit upon when I was reviewing this this morning, is that you were showing a setback of 20 feet. Well, typically, the house itself is 20 feet setback. And so when we're front-loading a house, I want to make sure that we are beyond that setback of the home. So it either has to go to the back wall of the home or further. So I'm looking at a minimum of 30 feet setback from property line. So if they're going to front-load that home, they need to have, provide an access...
Right.
...to that detached garage, so.
Absolutely.
And then I was going through the fencing materials, and I know that you eliminated the CMUs, and I understand that, but we need to be a little more refined on that because there are some instances where people have done brick pillars and all of that. So that is a masonry unit. And so I want to make sure that we can separate the two out as opposed to a CMU block and some type of a brick unit.
Okay. Can I add to that? Also, like the retained walls, there happens to be one on Fourth Avenue or Fourth Street right now that's going in, because they're on a corner and it's pretty high-sloped. So we would want to be able to allow some sort of...
Well, those are CMU's.
CMU blocks.
Okay.
Even though it's not technically a fence, there are some hilly areas that we would want to make sure we allow someone to stabilize their hillside without it, without us putting too many regulations where they can't even support a slope.
Well, I'm just wondering whether or not, instead of just excluding masonry, if we can put a provision in there, they need to submit, we'll review, and then either approve or disapprove the material.
But we could certainly add retaining walls, you know, to this to talk about what's acceptable or what may want to be discouraged. Because I'm sure we've all seen retaining walls that don't impact the pedestrians, and then we've probably all seen ones that maybe are less pleasant from an experiential standpoint for pedestrians.
And one of the other things is, when I'm looking at the wood fences, of course, existing code says that they will have, if you go to the next one forward, one more. There. So, because it says the architectural side of the fence will be to the exterior, I want to make sure that it's very clear in there what that actually means, because people are like, well, I don't know what you mean, but they've got three-quarters of the fence in. So anyways, I just want to make sure that we can make that a notation, that here's the exterior, the architectural side of that fence that needs to face outward and not inward, so.
That's the next step we would take, Mark. And actually, part of it, I think, is to point out that in some fence designs, both sides are both the architectural side. They're both equal in their appearance. And actually, we have a couple of those on here. And then we could also illustrate ones that have a more presentable side and a less presentable side. And in those instances, the architectural side must be the public side.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yep. And then just my last item was on the landscaping, because we were looking at whether that's a unit count per lot or whether it's a percentage per lot. And I see kind of the benefit to both ways. I just know that when we try to do percentages of things, that becomes kind of a controversial issue with typically the developer, the landowner. Whereas if you're just doing a unit count per lot, it makes it much simpler for them to say, you know, you need to have a tree in the front, a tree in the back, so much green space, vegetation, all of that. So side yard, rear yard.
We could certainly...
And so I just wanted to know whether or not you guys, I'm sure you've thought about this, about what benefits there are for either...
Yeah, in terms of percentage, like percentage of open area, for example, that can oftentimes be a little bit more challenging because the benefit with the quantity is that it can either be expanded or, you know, more compact, but still have the same effect of having lush landscaping. So there can sometimes be a benefit from a quantity standpoint. And then it also ensures that, you know, homeowner can say, okay, I need six trees. It's a little more approachable sometimes than providing a percentage.
Right. Okay. That's it.
Couple things. One is maybe more directed to staff. Are we going to get far enough in advance to actually spend time with a draft of the proposal? I mean, what's the timing on that?
I believe we're trying to adopt by the end of the year.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We're trying to adopt by the end of the year.
Okay, but we'll have a draft far enough ahead, because my concern is that based on the rules about design review now, we won't see these. These will be administrative reviews. So design review boards' only shot at this is through the standards. So I think it's really important we have time to think about landscaping and fencing and parking and whether, to be able to read what you're doing and actually drive through Old Town and visualize it.
Look at it from this point, this is your beginning point right now. This is the draft, this is how it's laid out, so you need to be making those notes on this document right now.
But do we get anything in...
Oh, you will, yeah. I mean, we talked about the schedule, and Julie may be able to talk, or Christine, talk about what that schedule looks like with a product to come out.
Okay. This is a hard way to do it? I mean, to tie these things together, kind of?
Right, but this is just to generate some thought, provoke some thought on what we're trying to achieve here. So this draft is what you need to be marking out to provide that input for them to be able to give you a more refined product.
Yeah, because writ large, this is consistent with all the conversations we've had about it. It's not the writ large I'm concerned about, it's the writ small. It's the detail. And how much detail do we need to give staff the tools to regulate this in a way that's consistent with kind of where we're going in? Is this going to not only provide us a tool, but give council comfort with, when we say preserving Old Town, that that has some meaning? And we just need time with it.
Absolutely. I'm hoping more. I think we see that we're going to need a fair amount of time to get to the actual sketches and find the right locations. So it's important to us to make sure we got this in front of you and make sure we're going down the same path before we do that work. So we anticipate, I think our schedule is about three to four weeks, time to get a draft, the next refined draft, to get it to you, with time for you to review it before you remember the question. Basically, it's kind of our timeline.
Okay. Yeah, good.
There's a lot of detail, but for us to create and for you to review.
Because this has some of the elements of form-based code, and that works because of the attention to detail. And you haven't, and we haven't addressed here the public realm so much.
Right.
And I don't know if it's even appropriate, but some sense of how does all this kind of tie together to maintain that, to maintain what we want to preserve in Old Town. With this, sure, let's go. Thank you.
Bruce, when we get a, when we get the next draft, I'll just send it out to the commissioners, and then whenever we have it on the meeting, you'll get whatever update. So as soon as we get it, we'll send it out, meeting or not, just so you have the information so you can start reviewing it. And then I had a question that I don't think that we brought up before until we just, until I just wrote it down while we were going through here. You were talking about the exterior rehabilitation, the percentage. Is there, are we going to be looking at over a certain amount of years? So someone doesn't say, oh, I'm going to do 10% this year and 10% next year and 10% the next year and weasel their way through the design standards?
That is a common thing that occurs, unfortunately, isn't it? Yeah, we could certainly look at including verbiage, such as over the course of five years, or, you know.
Well, it's kind of like a SEPA process.
Uh-huh.
You know how they try to nickel and dime you on the SEPA? Oh, no, I'm only doing so much. Well, what's the total project?
Right.
Because that's what we need to look at.
Right.
So we need to ask that same question. What are your plans for the next, yeah, like you said, five years or three years, whatever? So.
I just didn't know if you already had some other cities that had done certain years. I just... I just thought of it off of Floodplain. Where, where I previously was employed, there was a lot of Floodplain development. So they were allowed up to fifty percent. They couldn't go over fifty percent within a two-year period.
Mm-hmm.
And so it was kind of a pretty, two years wasn't very much. Or was, or was quite frequent to me. Because you could get to hundred, hundred percent really quickly without ever having to do anything. And so I was just wondering if there were some examples from other cities that you knew of? The, if they did a five-year, like a five-year or a two or a three or, you know, anything in there. So it's just something for us to think about for our next meeting?
Yeah, let us dig into that a little bit more. I would really love to because I agree that two years seems pretty quick. And I imagine that some homeowners that would be looking to do an exterior rehabilitation, the reality is that they may look to spread it out anyways from a funding standpoint. So I think it would be wise to think about, is two years really appropriate? Or do we want to think about somewhere between three and five? I would think anything beyond five is maybe too long.
Agree, yep.
But
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
It would also be nice to have enough time because staff will, since they're the ones that have to administer it, will come up with a lot of detail that we wouldn't even think about. So I'm assuming it's also possible with staff comments as these drafts progress, like what you just did, Amy, with, well, what do we do if somebody wants to spread it out for like five years?
Somebody wants to spread it out for like five years? That's a question we may not have thought of because we don't have to do the day-to-day stuff with that. But getting that kind of staff input along the draft process would really help.
Okay. But that works.
You're the one that has to administer it, not us, so.
All I know is that we want change from what we currently have.
We would happily welcome any questions or comments, Amy or Mark, that you want to collect. And we could incorporate them and talk about them in our upcoming, upcoming meeting and see how staff feels or any, any thoughts about additional things that need to be incorporated or more detail.
If you guys want to send an email to Mark or myself or both of us in the next week and a half, because I think we're meeting, we're meeting back with, with both of them in two weeks for our internal discussion of what we want to push forward. That would be most helpful for the first round, and then we can go from there.
I believe that's all the questions for this evening. Did you have a question, Mike?
No.
No? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate everything. It was, I'm looking forward to the next one, but I like what we've seen so far.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christine, and thank you, Julie.
So we will now move on to item number three on our agenda. This is a Reese Construction Design Review.
Yes, this is a, whoops. This is obviously a workshop, so it's just discussion. So Reese Construction has submitted for a new seven thousand four hundred and twenty-one square foot, two-story office building and also an eight hundred and forty square foot, one-story scale house that's internal to their, into their property that possibly can be seen from the street, but I don't believe it really can be. But they did design it, in my opinion, pretty well. So this is at their current site at fifty-eight oh-two Cemetery Road. And I just, I don't know if you guys had any comments on it. There were six requested items that I sent back to the applicant. They submitted today, fixing all of them. So I should be able to bring it to you next week or two weeks with no conditions that they've met everything on the, the requested items. So unless there's something that you saw that stood out that I did not catch, it should be able to come back, meeting, meeting everything. So I don't know if you had a chance to review it or not, but I didn't know how much detail we really wanted to go over the requested items when they already submitted back fixes.
If they're going to put a sidewalk, I mean, I know one of them was a sidewalk to the street, but it's a fenced, how is that going to work?
Yeah, so they provided a walkway. So on the, they have their northern access, so into their building on the north side, there's a drive aisle. They have now provided a crosswalk across their driveway and a sidewalk from their parking area to Cemetery Road. So right now Cemetery Road does not currently have proper frontage improvements, sidewalks, bike lane, you know, whatever else we're going to do.
That's why I wondered how it was going to work out.
But we are going to enter a development agreement with them that is going to be a requirement of their zoning permit that when the time comes for Cemetery Road to be updated or when the city is ready to do that or when that's required, that they will be responsible for their entire frontage. So at least right now, there is a pathway if someone is walking. I don't know if their business really has a lot of pedestrian traffic that they're going to get, but you never know. And it is a requirement, so at least it's there for the future of the building. And they did provide pedestrian lighting along that sidewalk up into their building. They didn't have any pedestrian lighting prior, so they did supply that. And their, I guess I can go over it. Their downspouts, they said, are internal to the building design, so you will not see gutters on the outside. Not exactly sure how that works because I'm not a architect, but they are saying that that will not. Their irrigation plan will be, they asked for that to be pushed to their civil, to come in on their civil design for their landscaping. So I don't have an irrigation plan at this time, but it'll be conditioned for the, I guess, that maybe this would be a condition on this one. So that one will stay as a condition, but it'll also be on their zoning permit, a condition for a landscape plan to be shown on the civil. And all their utility meters, electrical, service lines, everything will either be underground because they have to be now or they'll be located on the south side of the building is what they submitted. So I believe they're going to do landscaping between the parking lots. They're going to add park, add additional landscaping between the parking spaces and Cemetery Road. They added some onto their new site plan. And those were the requested items that I had. Unless you have any additional ones. Yes?
This is just, appears everyone else got this stuff. Some reason I didn't, the only thing I could download was the matrix and your comments and a couple of elevations, rendered elevations. I didn't get the rest of it. Possible to stop by and get a hard copy of that?
Sure.
Okay.
I can give it to you right now.
Well, that would work better.
You can even have my notes.
The design of the building itself, when I look at some of the renderings of the, on, you know, like the north elevation.
Mm-hmm.
It seems, and this is perhaps going a little bit more into opinion than the commissioner's input, is that it seems a little out of character with some of the buildings that we typically see along there. Is that, does anybody share that same?
It's the only general industrial area that faces Cemetery Road. I believe the entire
And the other residential.
Yeah, so everything else is residential. And then their existing buildings, as you saw in the, in my staff findings and the guidelines, I actually said that this would be an improvement to what was already on the site. So we didn't want them to compare and to build to what was on the site already. I believe the mobile, their mobile home kind of office is going to be demolished at some point. I don't think it is right away.
That's the scale shaft. So that goes away when they build some scale shaft.
Okay, when they, yes. So some of it will go away, but yes, the only other commercial on that road up until Airport Boulevard is the home, the semi-home occupation that's next door to them, which is Optometrist.
Eye doctor or something, yeah.
So yes, I see, understand your point. But I thought they actually did a fairly well, good job for it being entirely industrial and for an office.
And frankly, it looks like a school to me. But that's
Their entryway, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on item number three, Reese Construction Design Review? No other questions, then we will move on to item number four. Item number four engrossed second substitute house bill one-two-two-zero, which is required code changes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the House Bill twelve-twenty was adopted by legislature earlier this year. There are mandatory requirements in here. Those mandatory requirements are emergency shelters and transitional housing items. And so the easiest way to go through this is just to go to the ordinance and the changes on the definitions and the permissible use table. So I don't know if you've had a chance to review that or not, but if you go to the, the House Bill itself, there's a lot of information in there and not all of it is applicable at this moment. It's stuff that we have to utilize when we're developing our comprehensive plan. But the things that are in place right now because they've already been enacted are the transitional housing requirements, which was required by all cities within August of this year. And then the emergency housing, which is in September of this year. So originally in the copy you have, I started this as an interim ordinance. And so that's the way it reads in the ordinance and some of the language. Since this is kind of a work in progress, I started thinking about this, that it's, it's mandatory, we have to adopt these items. And what was the purpose of doing interim? Because we're going to have to adopt them, we don't have a choice. So the new ordinance has eliminated all the interim language in it. And by doing that, so we only have to go through one public hearing. So we'll need a recommendation from planning commission to go to council for them to vote on it, to adopt. So one thing I do want to point out is this, is in their permissible use table. We did several things with permissible use table simply because it was available to us to work on. And so with the zoning changes that were made last year during the docketing process, we were having to do the permissible use table to catch up with the changes that were made. So we took advantage of this moment in time to add those elements into the permissible use table. So you'll notice that along the top heading here, we've changed all of the zonings to reflect the changes that we've made. And then we were, since this is a work in progress, we had made additional changes in what you probably have a copy of. And so we will get those out to you this week to review. But we've added a few items in here that just, that made sense to make these changes while we're going through this process. So a lot of them had to do with multifamily in the different zones. Had to do with where the supportive housing is going to be, where the transitional housing is going to be. And if you notice in the document itself, we've given a mile span between facilities. So if you have a permanent transitional housing, that, that, you can't have another facility within a mile of that, that location or with the emergency shelters also. So there are provisions in there, and the shelters also have to be within a quarter mile of a transit.
I noticed that when, when I was reviewing it, the quarter-mile part of it seemed, of course, very logical to me, but it seemed like that you had to have a mile in between the two different places. Is that, is that a common thing?
Well
It seems like quite a way.
Because you don't want to inundate
Sure.
that area. I mean, if you don't have any provisions in there to have separation. You know, there's only a few places that you're going to be within that quarter mile of a, of a trans, especially when the BRT is up and running. So you don't want to have, you know, four or five different transitional housing or supportive housing full-time within that whole corridor there. So you do want some separation to occur.
And have the effect of loading it up in Smokey Point.
Exactly.
Exactly, yeah.
Exactly right. So anyways, those are kind of the changes that were made. These got finalized on Friday. And so you, the agenda went out prior to the, the last few changes that we made. So I'll make sure that you get a new permissible use table and a new copy of the ordinance. It's going to be going forward.
There were some minor things tucked into the changes. I'm assuming that what we got, if it was underlined, it is new.
Correct.
And not in the current, I had thought we'd done those new residential zoning already.
No, we, we were working on that because there are two elements that we need to update. One is permissible use table. The other is a density and dimensional table to reflect the zoning changes. With the work we're doing right now with the Old Town design standards, because they're bringing forward some design items that we want to utilize. If you saw the example, remember the examples they were showing of the lots? How the homes were situated on the lots, access, all of that, dimensionals. We're going to take those same examples and utilize those in our density and dimension table.
So we're going to wait on that because we're paying them to do the images, so we're not having to come up with the images twice, basically. So we're going to wait for their images to come through and then adjust the lot sizes for the zones. So that way it can be pretty simple on our end where we have their image and we can just say, okay, instead of thirty-eight feet in downtown, we're going to make it a sixty-foot lot. And then this is what you have. And so it's really easy to manipulate the, the, the design or the picture that they have versus creating the entire thing. So we will wait on, until we get those graphics from them to finish the design or dimensional standards of the rest of the zones.
Great. And then you mentioned that, that commission would be making recommendation to council. And how soon would you like?
So we have a public hearing planned for the twenty-first.
Yes, I will send this out tomorrow. The new, the updated, we have not, I don't think we have any changes unless you have changes to it.
No, we're done with
So we're done with the permitted use table and the definitions, so I'll send that out tomorrow morning. So you have that, but you'll also get it again as the commission packet when that goes out next Tuesday. So I will send that right now.
So you'll get an updated ordinance, you'll get an updated permissible use table and an updated definitions.
So then after the public hearing is when?
You'll take action.
We would then make recommendation to council.
So, so planning commission will do the public hearing on it.
That's correct.
Do you anticipate capital building as well?
I don't anticipate that, especially if we go to virtual meetings again. But we are planning right now to do an open forum for the public hearing because it's already been posted and going out. So we want to be able to conduct that. Otherwise, it screws our timeline up because then we have to repost in the paper and everything else to show this, to reflect what was discussed at council tonight, so.
I mean, basically, that legislation also leads in our conversation that did more, did you on it? And it, two parts. One part is the ordinance over which we have no choice.
Right.
And it won't be fought over, that doesn't matter.
Yep.
And then the other section is the first part, what you sent to us. And that's the changes required in the pump plant, and those are a problem.
Yep.
I mean, really, I mean, yeah. I mean, not just from definitional standpoint, but the standards they're using. And the first reaction is, huh?
It's a, it's a lot of additional work that comes out of this.
But once you get past that, I'm not quite there, but once you get past that, it's okay. How do we make our pump plant work given these new mandates?
Mm-hmm.
And those are very troubling. But you're right, over this stuff, we don't
I, I will let you know that I have two grant applications on my desk right now that I'm working on. I'm trying to get the RFPs out so I can get consultant selection done. One is for Housing Action Plan. It's the next step in the Housing Action Plan. So we did our Housing Action Plan, but one of the implementation strategies in there was to create a subarea plan. So what I, my plan is to use the Housing Action Plan grant to do a subarea plan for the Smokey Point corridor. The other grant is a The other grant is a transit-oriented development, and with that, we can do a planned action of the entire corridor with that. So we use one pot of money to do the subarea plan, which then gives you the ability to work in, with your planned action. So you identify the subarea and then you do the planned action to allow for development to occur.
Well, and the path we're on is, we don't call it transit-oriented development, but that's basically what we've been doing anyway.
Well, it is transit-oriented development because by 2027, the gold line will be in place, the BRT, the Bus Rapid Transit. So we, we meet the criteria.
Yeah. It's a fair amount of work. Thank you.
Well, and it's lots of, of the work product that we're going to need for the comprehensive plan. So if there's grants available in order to do that work as opposed to having to go out and hire it independently.
Yeah, the frustrating part is if you read that legislation, as, as we talked about a little bit, one expects out of the legislature a higher level of sophistication, and that is just my naive perception because when you read that legislation, it's as if they were totally ignoring of the reality of what the rest of the country is doing and jurisdictions that have tried exactly those things with no success. And somehow we're going to make it work. And the unfunded mandate part of it is, is a bit disturbing.
Well, as these bills were being introduced, we did voice our opinion at the time with our lobbyists and.
Well, I just heard, I'm, I'm assuming that the AWSC fought this and lost.
Mm-hmm.
Because for any city, particularly our size, these, these will be challenging.
Mm-hmm.
But again, no choice, so.
Well, one thing about it is you have to, I mean, reading between the lines is they, they tell you what you need to include in your comprehensive plan. They don't tell you how successful you have to be at it.
Well, that's true.
You just have to implement it.
That, but that gets to our focus group conversations about, do you want this to really attack it, to really do something? Do you want to give it lip service? Well, some of these things.
Not until somebody comes up with strategies that are successful can you really be, implement that, so.
Well, and they say also provide, provide, address the, the obstacles, like, oh, I don't know, lack of funding.
Right.
But a good portion of our, of our housing plan involves trust fund.
Yep.
And so that addresses it. The fact that funding it could be interesting, doesn't matter, we've addressed it. That kind of.
I was going to say, I think there's a lot of places we can do with what we're already doing, though. Like by, it doesn't mean that, like you said, it has to be implemented, but if we start allowing just the Old Town, just Old Town residential, for example, at the same size as a single-family home, we could supply four housing units. So a lot of that stuff of reaching the, that gap or barrier of low, very low, extremely low, all their new definitions of how, of income households, we're not telling the developer how to do it. We're not saying that they have to sell it at a certain amount, but we can at least show that we are trying to make that happen.
It's amazing.
I, I know that it's a far reach, but at least it can show that.
Just a bit. But, I mean, underlying this too are some assumptions I, I'm really concerned that the legislature has taken, like when you get into details of AMI and how that's structured for us, that's a problem.
Yeah.
Over which we have no control. I mean, we don't determine for HUD what their service area is. We're included in it along with, I don't know, Seattle and Bellevue. That may skew the line a little.
Right.
But that's what we have to deal with, but perhaps we can address that as well. I, I, it can't be addressed with numbers because there aren't any, but at least some addressing of that for us, that.
You know what I take out of this, is what the legislature was trying to do, is that they got weary of saying, we recommend you take some steps to providing for this, and that's been pretty unsuccessful. So to me, the only way you're going to get people to react to it is to make it a mandatory item. Now, it doesn't mean, like I said, they give you the marching orders to implement that, but they don't, you know, there, there is no penalty for not being able to succeed with it. But you do have to show an effort moving forward.
Yeah, and this is still not a top-down state.
Right.
But, I mean, this is, this is their, this is what they're doing with the ordinance items of, of housing, just sort of vacates for us an area that, over which we have no more control. But it's pretty limited.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I do understand what the legislature is trying to accomplish, it's just they painted the state with a rather broad brush.
Yes, but we've seen that before.
Yeah, and we're, we're in the same category as cities much larger than us. Admittedly, they may have the same problems, but not.
Well, really, I think the, the critical thing that I've always struggled with is what's that sweet spot? What's that percentage that you need to meet? Because nobody ever gives you that, that, that number.
Yeah.
So you have to try and derive that through exercises to figure out, okay, does this work for our community? And I think that's the, I think that's probably the intent is, you know, and it's not a cookie cutter. You have to figure out what is, what is acceptable, what's applicable to your own jurisdiction.
Well, and, and that, to me, increases the importance of the focus group because those explorations are exactly what we do.
Exactly. And, and reach out and bring the public input into that to say, okay, you know, we've had this discussion. Let's bring in the people who deal with this on a ongoing basis and ask them, what do you think is appropriate here?
Yeah, and I mean, selling this to the public, even the part that's mandated, is, will be interesting because you know the public's not going to like that.
Well, you know, they can always voice their opinion to the legislature and their representatives, so.
Yeah, and, and the, yeah. Yeah, and the requirement of the city on the, on affordable housing, and they've done less than a total description of the affordable housing issue. And it's all from the supply side, and that's nice, it just won't work.
Right.
Any other questions, Mike? Okay. Any other comments from the staff on that? Okay, thank you. Our next item on the agenda would be, it looks like we have our esteemed councilman, Dan, Don Vanny here. Did you have any questions or comments, Don?
No.
All right, thanks. So.
At this point, the chair requests a motion for adjournment. On favor?
Aye.
No, no. We are adjourned.
Bang.